I guess you all realize today is 27th. It's the ninth year anniversary of the tornado, so. Just like to remember all the ones that lost their lives and affected by the tornado. You know a little bit about that?
Yeah, just a little.
Welcome our guest. Before we get started, Dawn, would you please sit on the microphone?
Yeah. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we bow before you today, Lord, to thank you for your blessings. Thank you for loving us and helping us, Lord, and for everything that you've done for us. We're so thankful for it. And we pray, heaven and father, that you would, before we get into our meeting, just ask you to bless the families of the people that lost loved ones in the tornado, not just Hackleburg and all Marion County and all over northwest Alabama, Lord. Be with them and comfort them and just help them, Lord, as only you can. Pray, heaven and father, that you would bless our meeting and bless all the people of Hackleburg. And as we go through this virus, we ask that you would just help the doctors to come up with a vaccine, Lord, that would help us to get away from all of this. And we ask now, Lord, that you would help us in our meeting, give us the knowledge, Lord, to make the right decisions for you and for our people. And ask that you would just forgive us all, Lord, who we fail you. We'll give you the praise for it all. Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, need a motion to call the meeting to order.
Motion.
Abby. Second.
Second.
Kevin. All in favor. Item number two, need a motion to cover only what's on the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor. Item number three, two sets of minutes to go over. We'll ask Scarlett to read March 9th, I believe, March 30th.
The town, uh, the Hackleburg Town Council made a regular session on March 9th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Mayor Colber asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lally made a motion and was seconded by councilmember Kevin Warble. Councilmember Kevin Warble led everyone in prayer and the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Colber stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Don Warble to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the February 10th, 2020 meeting. After reading, a motion was made by councilmember Don Warble and was seconded by councilmember Kevin Warble to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a financial statement to review. A motion was made by councilmember Warble and seconded by councilmember Kevin Warble to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a check register for them to look over. After reviewing, a motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Kevin Warble to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. In old business, the clerk updated the mayor and council concerning computers for Mandy and herself. With the help of IT manager Wayne Mayes, the computers have been ordered. In new business, Huddy's rent was discussed. Councilmember Lally would like to use some of this money for repairing some things at the rec center. The clerk related to the council that an invoice for the remainder of the 2019 rent in the amount of $2,300 had been mailed to him, and he brought it back and left it with her. He has paid all rent and power for 2020 so far. The mayor stated that he thought that the money Huddy had spent on repairing building before he moved in should be taken into consideration. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Warble to resend the invoice to him and ask him to pay it. Voting was as follows, four A's, one N. The mayor and council discussed opening the rec center to the public. The mayor will get in touch with Evoc Hornet to see if he's still interested in the job and shoot to open on March 30th. The dates to open will be Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. It was also discussed and decided that the youth baseball and softball could not practice in the gym on most days, but could on Wednesday and Friday in case of rain. Councilmember Lally wanted to make sure that no one would be able to wear cleats on the floor if no baseball and softballs could be used inside. She also stated that the school had donated some basketball rags to the rec center. The mayor and council discussed North Street. This is the street that goes down to the Dave Smith house. Mr. Smith and his daughter claim that they own the road because it's on their land, but the town has paved it and paid for upkeep on it. Mr. Smith wants to give the town around 200 yards of the street in front of Mrs. Jeanette Wigginton's property and keep the rest of the street going to his former house. If this is the case, the town will no longer be liable for the upkeep of this property. Mayor Colber asked the council who would be in favor of accepting the road frontage in front of Mrs. Wigginton's property from the Smiths. A motion was made by councilmember Don Warble and was seconded by councilmember Kevin Warble to accept the frontage and to make sure we get a D or easement on this property. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The mayor dated the council on playground equipment to be ordered for the park. Each council member had a handout showing the equipment. The quote is for $24,256 and includes two slides, a climber, tunnel, shift's wheel, and ladder, as well as swings and park benches. The mayor also stated that he and councilmember Don Warble are working on a grant to help update the park. The amount they are seeking is $12,000. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Warble to purchase the equipment. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. Chief of Police Jonathan Oates presented the mayor and council with information on the chief's conference in April. A motion was made by councilmember Don Warble and seconded by councilmember Lally to send Jonathan to this chief's conference. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. Chief Oates also wanted to discuss new body cams with the mayor and council. He gave them each copies of three options. After a discussion about each, a motion was made by councilmember Warble and was seconded by councilmember Kevin Warble to purchase BC 300 body cams at the price of $2,240. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The mayor and council discussed neighborhood. The clerk informed the mayor and council that the entertainment was filling up and we had a few food vendors. Also, Ray McCarley suggested that instead of giving trophies for the car show, that we give monetary prizes. He wanted to donate $1,000 and has asked the town to put in $1,000 so that we could do this. A motion was made by councilmember Don Warble and seconded by councilmember Lally to do as Ray McCarley asked. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. Mayor Colber had an announcement about the legal fees for people stressed back incurred during the grocery store issue. He and councilmember Don Warble met with board members of the bank, and they wanted to help with the fees. The town has already paid two payments of $2,500 each and owe two more. The board members agreed if the town paid one more payment of $2,500, that they would make the final payment. The mayor and council discussed hiring a full-time employee for the street department. Everyone was in agreement that the person hired should be able to run equipment. The mayor stated that he would post the job for two weeks, take applications, and then conduct interviews. The new employee would be hired at $12 per hour and get step raises to top pay of $12.75 per hour. A new police officer needs to be hired with the resignation of Adam Sutherland. The mayor and council agreed to use the same qualifications used to hire Assistant Chief David Kripton. An ad will run two weeks in the Journal Record. Con Tour Brands, formerly Wrangler, would like to help the town with cleanup and some upgrades around the town as a project set up for their employees. One thing they would like to do is put a new basketball goals at the park. The mayor and council discussed putting in concrete pads for the goals. Also, the mayor will contact Crystal Wilson from Con Tour about some other things that can be done. The mayor talked to the council about being contacted by Southeastern Wrestling. They want to host an event in June in the rec center. Everyone agreed that the mats would have to be put down in the floor, on the floor, and removed immediately after the event. Also, councilmember Don Warble thought it would be a good gesture to have them split the gate with the town and it be donated to Bryce, uh, to Bryce's rec. The mayor will contact them again and talk about the details. The gravel and grade list was discussed. The list includes Bay Whitley and an area between Vernon Britton and Doug Gunning. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Don Warble to gravel and grade sand drives. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. There being no further business to come from the council. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Warble to adjourn.
All right. You heard the reading of the minutes on March 9th. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, on the, uh, the one on how it was not for rent, it was for power bill that he did not pay. He paid his rent, because you got in here, it was for rent. He never paid the agreement of the power bill. So he still hasn't paid anything.
He paid all the way through 2020.
Yeah, he's paid that year.
No, they want to say, we had a fine where we ran it from 2019, and it was in a contract. We went over this last meeting that we had, and that totaled up to $2,300. The bill was presented to him. We all voted that he would get sent that bill back, and it was for the power bill. It was not for the rent.
Well, I had power too in here. So, yeah, that'll make it clearer.
So did he get his bill sent back to him?
I don't know if we had $2,300 in power, did we?
Yes, we did.
Power bill?
That was the difference in the whole year. Remember, there was the month that what's-her-name was in there, Eric Sire, and we took $500 off of it. It would have been $2,800 if we reduced it down. So did he get sent the bill back?
Yes.
Okay, but he still hadn't paid it.
Right.
Yeah, no, my opinion, I think we ought to give an incentive to get people to town.
We already voted that he's paid it.
Well, I mean, we can probably just go back to the mandate.
No.
That's just my opinion.
Then he was fine for the, was it sent certified or just regular?
It was just regular mail.
How much credit did he get for the work that he's done?
A year's rent, free?
I don't think it was a year, but he gets.
It was, he went in there in November of 2018. Doesn't matter, that's when the contract was signed. He went in there in 2000, November of 2018, took occupancy of it, done some upgrades and all that. We had a meeting, all his fees were waived, and then we agreed that we would not waive the power bill. And then when we sent him a bill for the power bill, we got irate and refused to pay it or call. And we all agreed that he would have to pay the power bill. And that's every bit of us in the minutes. Dawn, agree?
Just my opinion, we would ought to offer more incentive to get people here. If there's anything we can add as a bonus, uh, I don't have people beating the door down to come in, but we'll see if he sends it back or if he pays it.
The only thing he has sent is $6,000 to pay for rent and power through, uh, April of 2021.
Right.
Anything else?
Free software, did you find that we have anybody to fly?
Yeah, we've got it under New Business to discuss.
Okay.
You get the playground equipment order?
Yeah, most of us can't have.
Body cam?
Yeah, Jonathan. What do you think?
Ms. Con Tour still want to do the basketball?
The coronavirus has got all of this, pretty much, that we went over ahead with.
Yeah, so the open end of the gym opening up, live games, and all that stuff.
We'll have to wait until the governor declares tomorrow.
Make a motion to accept.
That street department, before we do that, we got that closed out, didn't we?
Yeah, it's on the New Business, so I'll say.
The Smith, uh, we. Yeah.
All right, so Eugene made a motion to accept minutes. Need a second?
Second.
Kevin made a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Dawn, you'll read the minutes.
You'll have a two sets of slides because it went here.
Okay. All right.
Okay. The Hackleburg Town Council made a special session on March 30th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Mayor Colber asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lally made a motion and was seconded by councilmember Don Warble. Councilmember Kevin Warble led everyone in prayer and the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Colber stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Kevin Warble to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a check register for them to look over. After reviewing, a motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Kevin Warble to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The mayor and council discussed the need to pass an ordinance dealing with the coronavirus. Mayor Colber stated that most towns were passing proclamations to provide for an emergency response to the COVID-19 outbreak. A motion was made by councilmember Don Warble and seconded by councilmember Lally to pass ordinance 2020-002 for said purpose. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. As a recipient of CDV chief funds for paving project SMCM PF 19047, the town of Hackleburg wants to encourage fair housing throughout the town by passing Resolution 20-002, declaring April 2020 Fair Housing Month. A motion was made by councilmember Kevin Warble and seconded by councilmember Lally to pass this resolution. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by councilmember Lally and seconded by councilmember Warble to adjourn.
We made a motion to accept the minutes, March 30th.
Motion.
The mayor called.
Uh, did we get a second?
Yeah.
Abby.
All in favor?
Aye.
End statements. Item number four, financial statement.
Since we had more people leaving at home, is our tax revenue increased by having to buy more stuff now?
Yes.
You would think it would.
It could drop off at the end of the year.
Exactly.
Yeah, it is.
And the fact of that, something we felt for about three months, probably, that's ain't gonna be good.
Just go to the direction.
Only from the west, beginning state one. I'm a fair actor, I mean, a long time. Got by, but did they? We got approved for a grant, hit with paving grant or?
Yeah.
Fair housing.
Yeah, that was a different issue.
Yeah, that wasn't on there, that's saying it on the order at that time.
Yeah, that's true.
We're seeing all the occupational funds can be moved to the general fund and whether
walk to 163. And our reserve is getting pretty low, under $40,000.
Also listed on here are the HB2 gas taxes. I had set up two accounts because I thought they wanted separate accounts, but our auditor has advised me to combine those. He said that, uh, that will be just one less account.
Still fuel taxes.
It is, it's just fuel taxes, new taxes that they.
What about, uh, school tax funds? They're not out of school, can we roll that back into the Kimmel fund or something?
No, it's, they, it's earmarked for the state. Which we, we won't turn that over to them until school starts that.
Well, and our mail's gonna be greater than what it usually is too, at that point.
Um.
Well, we're still getting a half cent. We still got a half cent going in the one fund, a half cent going there, is correct.
In the grocery fund, yeah.
Notice it has $19,000.
And we may have had a usual.
Yeah, enough for that time now, that's very important.
We'll get through two years of the same.
But you never know, it's like this COVID outbreak. And then it's all later. But now knowing what's happening Monday says staying employees.
Knock on wood, we're pretty good shape right now.
Need a motion to accept the financial statement?
No.
Eugene? Second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Everybody? All right, fun part, pay the bills.
I can explain any of your statement here, and thank you. If you have any, you've got, have any questions later if you want to ask them or whatever.
Pretty much otherwise.
You need to do the title, six arms.
Yeah, a little bit better, but not much for the part compared to.
We're a little bit below our projection budget versus actual. Is that anything that we're gonna catch that up?
Yeah, I see.
On the balance sheet?
I think so.
And also, Daryl, I was gonna tell them that our audit is finished except for a little bit of paperwork, and Don Wallace will be coming, I think, in June to present everything.
Back to our bill of sale, I think. Let's do it, let it in.
We wouldn't make a party on our mark if we had an insurance company up at night on our expenses. Because everything else is for close. Is high insurance kind of reassess?
We got a product for it. It's middle of the month.
Yeah.
I might not know our salary, you know, or not a little bit much either.
That's what's to be paid, everything else is paid down.
Need to pay the bills?
Need to pay the bills.
Pay them.
Motion? Abby? Second. Eugene? All in favor?
Yeah, we in here.
Warble boys are really quiet.
We, that's when y'all put us down here.
That's, that's damn out of me. My gosh.
I didn't know you figured it out. Yeah, I told him he wasn't here. Don't pay hell of a, that's not helping, man.
All right, New Business, item number one, we've got Marion County District Attorney Scott Slatton, he wants to address the council.
Thank y'all for having me. Um, don't take a lot of your time, but what I want to talk to you about is a domestic violence investigator for the 25th Circuit, which includes Marion, Winston County. Domestic violence is a scourge that touches all of our communities. As a law enforcement agency, domestic violence is a special type of case that takes a special type of person to investigate and to gather the facts over there. On top of domestic violence, an even more specialized area, sexual assault, sexual, uh, sexual, uh, violence cases. Those take an even more special person that can relate to victims. Those take an even more special persons that can relate to victims and get those people to open up. I didn't, I don't have my notes with me tonight, so don't hold me to numbers, but I know in two thousand eighteen in Marion Winston County, there are over two hundred and seventy domestic violence cases, um, in the, in the two counties combined. Ninety-eight of those were felony domestic violence cases. Those were felony cases that involved, domestic violence that involved a serious physical injury, or it was the third or more time a person's been charged with a misdemeanor domestic violence type charge. So something that was just, uh, not a serious physical injury, some type of physical injury. Over ninety-five percent of those victims, uh, in the sexual assault and in the domestic violence cases were women and children. I usually bring my investigator with me, Rusty Holson, little short guy, stockinged, bald, uh, prototypical kind of police officer looking kind of dude. And I, and I ask you, if you're a woman who's just gone through a sexual assault, child who's just gone through a sexual assault, female who's just, uh, you know, been into a domestic violence situation where you're in the hospital, you've been hurt, you've been injured. You wanna go talk to this little short bald guy who's come in and asking you all kind of serious questions about, uh, you know, being raped, uh, you know, what happened to you, what, how, how were you violated, what happened? Or would you rather talk to a female officer who can relate to you? In our total circuit, Marion Winston County combined, we have two female officers. Uh, one is Dawn Dodge, she's a jail administrator now, uh, the other's Macy Green, she's a relatively new police officer that works for the city of Hamilton. We didn't have any other females, and none that were interested in being an investigator of sexual assault, domestic violence. So this project started middle of December, back in, into January, uh, went around and talked to your police chiefs, talked to the sheriffs in both counties, and talked to them about a plan of, you know, we need to get a domestic violence, sexual assault investigator. It needs to be a female to relate to that ninety-plus percentage of the victims in those cases. Uh, but the question was, how do we pay for it? And my office has already pushed to, you know, to its financial limits, just like you guys are. And so I devised a little bit of a plan, talked about it with your police chiefs, I know they were all on board, I know Chief Utes is back here behind me somewhere, haven't made eye contact with him yet, but I know he's back there. He's not, he's not, it's David. I thought he was back here somewhere, but he's not, but I talked to him, uh, several months ago about this project before we kind of targeted somebody. Uh, we do have, uh, a female investigator that is, that is working with us now, um, but the financial part of it, uh, you're looking at seventy-plus thousand dollars to get an experienced investigator, somebody who's just trained in this type of stuff, that come in, wheels on the ground, ready to go. Uh, so we, we targeted, we looked, and we found that person that was interested, uh, she is currently working with my office now, but we're still asking for you to come on board to help us fund that. Uh, what I'm asking for is for a one-year pledge of twenty-five hundred bucks. Uh, my investigator, if you have any felony type domestic violence case, so something that has a serious physical injury, uh, you know, that recurrent type person that you have to keep going back, keep going back, keep going back to the same place, or any type of sexual assault or child abuse case. Uh, your officers will probably end up making that first initial report, uh, but she's on call twenty-four hours a day, if it's something where you need an investigator there, you can call her to come and investigate your case, take, basically take that case file over. That twenty-five hundred dollars is basically getting you a part-time investigator, is what it's doing. Uh, on top of that, you know, my office already has a, a regular major crimes investigator, uh, and Rusty Holson, the short little, uh, stocky bald guy, uh, but he's also at your officer's disposal as an investigator. Uh, but Sylvia Mothershed is the investigator that I've hired for this domestic violence, sexual assault position. Uh, she came to us from the city of Sheffield, she worked in, uh, worked for the city of Sheffield for ten-plus years. Uh, the last seven years of that, I believe, was, were in investigations. Uh, she did generalized investigations, but as the female investigator in Sheffield, she generally got handed all the domestic violence and all the sexual assault, uh, type cases. Uh, she's gone through, whenever I've got a resume, she's got three sheets of trainings that she's gone to, uh, that are focused toward domestic violence, sexual assault. It's focused toward investigative, um, interviewing techniques for victims, uh, in that situation. The whole plan was to go in, there are eleven municipalities in Marion Winston County, in your two county governments. The plan is ask everybody, all eleven municipalities, for the twenty-five hundred dollar asks that I've asked the city of Hackleburg for. Uh, the counties, because we do generally see more of these cases out of the counties, uh, we're at five thousand dollars apiece. Uh, as of right now, uh, Hackleburg is one of three municipalities that I've not presented to, that are not in, all the other municipalities are in, so. Uh, eight out of the eleven municipalities in both county governments have opted into this plan. The money wise, like I said, it's a one-year pledge, reassess, come back, uh, sometime in the spring of next year, see how things are going for you, I'm not gonna try to tie you down and hold you into a multiple year pledge there. Right now, I'm asking you for one twenty-five hundred dollar, uh, pledge, if it's working great, when we come back next year, we may look at setting out and doing something a little bit longer, uh, into that. So that twenty-five hundred dollars, you're basically getting thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars is what I'm asking from local governments. Uh, that funds about half of the salary for a year. Uh, my office has come up with the other half of the salary, plus all the equipment that's needed to go with that, so vests, guns, you know, that kind of stuff, we're, we're taking care of that, plus the other half of the salary benefits.
Question?
Sure.
What should you look like?
Geez, thirty-something years old.
Where did you, what'd you say your headquarters just left again?
Oh, I, we've got offices in Hamilton and Double Springs.
Okay. And y'all work for the county?
Yes, I, I, I work for the circuit, I'm, I'm a, I'm a state elected official, so.
Yeah, I know, man, I'm talking about, would she work through the sheriff's department?
Yeah, we contract.
Is what I'm asking.
She would be working through my office.
Okay.
So she's, she's employed by my, the district attorney's office.
Okay.
Um, that, that kind of enables her to go both counties, Marion and Winston.
What that does is put him on, uh, investigator, domestic violence and an investigator for everything else.
Well, I guess what you're wanting to do is have somebody that can go talk to a female and feel more comfortable and, and you need the help.
Definitely, and, and, you know, that's, that's kind of the thing, and you, David, you jump in, if you, if you want to help me here, you, you've been on the, you've investigated these domestic violence cases, and a lot of times you get a victim who's come out, they're, they, it's very hard to get them to talk about what has just happened to them. Uh, they, they don't, they're not responding to a male officer because they've been in that victimized role for so long, they're afraid to talk about any of that with a, with a male officer. Uh, and that's one of the problems that I know, how many times, you, you have recurrent domestic violence places, you can go back to the same household time after time after time.
Twenty-seven years.
So, you know, that's, that is somebody you can get in with a female there, we're hoping to kind of crack the ice, uh, so that those victims start telling us more about what's happened, and therefore we can start trying to solve the problem of those recurrent domestic violence cases. Uh, we can, we can get into the, the meat of the problem on sexual assault cases earlier than what we do in the process than we currently are.
Well, what was it cost us, the bail member, that five thousand a year that we got out of?
You're talking about the drug tax force?
No, the other thing, we wouldn't get nothing out of doing her.
Have a seat for the season, yeah, yeah.
Five thousand?
Yeah.
It's actually more than that.
Right.
Right stuff.
Then we gave her the, I don't see no problem giving you twenty-five hundred myself, man, I mean, I, I worked corrections for twenty years, and deal with female inmates, and understand what you're saying about, man, you do law enforcement for sure, ain't it, everything you can get, I mean, is a positive regardless.
Right.
I mean, nine hundred percent.
How many cases would you say we see in a year in Marion County of, I guess not just domestic, but violation of a?
You know, the, the serious cases, sexual assault, domestic violence cases coming through, you know, I know it was ninety-three in two thousand eighteen, I'm gonna say probably, it was more than half, it's gonna be sixty-five, seventy percent of those were gonna be in, in Marion County, just because population between Marion Winston County, and that's kind of how the population divides. Uh, so I, I'd say about sixty-five percent of those come from Marion County. And then what, once you get, and, and counties can kind of split up, but then it really has no demographic as far as population. Uh, you know, one year we may see, you know, city of Hackleburg have six or seven of these, you know, serious cases, next year you may have none. You know, three years maybe you may come back and you may have another eight or nine of those. And, and when you get into those years, when you have those eight or nine cases, you have a serious sexual assault, uh, you know, rape type case that goes on and on and on, you, you end up, you're spending overtime on officers, uh, going to a CAC interview in Florence, Jasper, you know, wherever we're going. Uh, tracking down perpetrators that, that may have gone somewhere else, and you're trying to find victims, trying to find witnesses, trying to find, you know, all this other stuff that's there. So, you know, from my point of view, I'm, I'm making my sale a little bit longer than I usually do, but, you know, the twenty-five hundred dollars over the course of a year, I, I think you've saved money instead of having, you know. Your local officers spending overtime to go to that, yes, sir.
So if you was to have a call that this would happen, would our local police go out and handle that call to begin with, or would your, your?
Your, your local officers are still gonna be the first responding officers, um, so whoever's on duty, they get a call to a domestic violence, uh, they get there, they get a call to a sexual assault, uh, they get there, you know, they're gonna kind of do the first, the first take on it. Is this something that's, that's serious, is this victim going to the hospital, has this victim been raped, have they been sexually abused, you know, something like that? If that's the case, yeah, you know, we can do the training with those guys to, to then call, call the sexual assault investigator to come in, they're just kind of there to maintain the scene, hold things down until we can get there and take that case over. And then once we take it over, you know, they don't have to be involved anymore.
What if we come up with a seventy thousand dollar woman? Would she not work for less than that?
Uh, that's about to go right when you, when you get out of.
Yeah, but you're in Hackleburg now.
No, we are in Hackleburg, we, your, your, your park's twenty-five hundred.
I know, but that, that's a pretty good check in Marion County.
It, it is, but like I said, when you get outside and you start looking, there's not a lot of female investigators in the state of Alabama. Um, you know, we, we kind of scourged around North Alabama for those that were interested, we found four.
They're specially trained.
Yeah, four, four, four officers, four investigators that have done sexual assault, domestic violence from Coleman to Decatur.
But Scott, what I was looking at is, our police ain't getting half that.
Don, they're not police officers, they're investigators, there's, there's a difference.
I know, there's a difference, but there's not no thirty-five thousand dollars difference.
Well, that's not our call.
It is, too, which we gonna pay for.
Yes, sir.
But once our officers are called out, we immediately call in this latter.
Yeah, once they assess the situation and they're, they want the investigator to come down, call the investigator out, and once that investigator gets there, uh, they're, they're for him to go do whatever else they need to do.
If you heard him earlier, he also said that it doesn't necessarily have to be a domestic dispute, it could be another situation, he's got other resources that they could ask also assist from, from his other investigators.
You know, but each of them can do anything, you know, but the female that I've hired was hired specifically for the domestic violence, sexual assault cases. Uh, you know, both of those investigators are trained as general investigators, you know, they can do, they can assist on theft cases, you know, major crimes, um. Certainly.
She, she's not just sitting in the office waiting on a call to come in, she's working.
She's working, she, she's doing other stuff a, as well as the domestic violence stuff, it's just, when she gets a domestic violence call, it can't, it's not gonna be, oh, well, I, I'm working on this theft case, I can't come, that's her first thing, we drop that, come to this.
And you said she was covering Marion and Winston?
Yes.
That's a big, Marion's huge, but when you add Winston, that's a lot of character. It is, but if you're talking about the ninety-three cases a year, I think between both of them, they could handle it, and she would be an asset.
And I'll say she's, her, her, her main office is in Hamilton, it's in my office in Hamilton, that's where her, her main base is set up.
Well, what do you think, assistant chief, I mean, I know my perspective, I think it'd be asset, do you think so?
I, I think so.
Said you've been there a lot, eleven years.
I think so, if you get a female that's been assaulted by a male subject, the last thing she wants to do is talk to another male about that assault. They're gonna, in my, oh, years of service, they clam up, they will not tell you anything, they're not comfortable talking with you. Uh, but if you get a female in there talking, they're more likely to open up.
And from the time the investigation started till it gets to the trial, you probably looking at tying him up, what, at least a year longer?
Maybe, definitely, from, from the beginning, from making a report to the end of the case, it's usually minimum eight months, up to more than that. Figure what time that it frees us up, uh, off of this case here, we could be working on something else.
I think if we ever put twenty-five hundred into anything, this would be a good cause to put in.
Make some money, by the way.
I was watching this on Facebook Live, it's definitely something that's needed, so if y'all agree to do this, I'll pay for half of it. I'll cut the city's costs in half by making a donation for half of the fee.
Motion to pay this.
But I, I appreciate it, well, I do, but I, I feel like the town shouldn't, shouldn't take that on, you pay it, but I do appreciate it, really do. But I, I feel like this is something we all agree, I guess, I mean, everybody will vote on it, but I feel like everybody would be, uh.
Well, it's.
Make a motion.
We, we make five thousand.
Person who deals in this, so that, so that we're covered with, with whoever's in this situation.
Oh, oh, yeah, I mean, on, once we take over the case, I mean, your officers are done with it, you know, you, all you've, all you've done, you've made the initial report, um, again, you know, we're, we're setting up training, as soon as we can go back to live training, we're setting up training to get these guys, uh, kind of how we're gonna work with it, and, and your chief and everybody else, we're gonna sit down and develop the plan on how, how it works. You know, how, how, when you make that call, when is she gonna come in and take over on what kind of cases? Um, you know, is she gonna come down that night, is it something that has kind of handled itself that night, and we can take over the investigation the next morning to continue that on? You know, we'll work out those, those details, and that, that's kind of a fluid thing on each case, a, as to how it ha, how it gets handled. Uh, but yeah, once we take that case over, you know, it's, it's, it's out of the city's hands and, and on, on my shoulders.
At the end of the first year, I guess we could get a report showing, you know, what, okay, I mean, I know, you know, names and all that, that's private, but far as what cases she worked and all of that.
Definitely, and we, I mean, we could, we, we can have the numbers broken down for, for municipalities.
You know, just, well, I wouldn't even, but I would say something like, at the end of the year, show you, you know, what she worked, and, I mean, I know, beyond a shadow of a doubt, twenty-five hundred, saves you a lot of money, but for one person, that's not much for that service.
I'll make a motion, play the joint.
You got a motion from Tabby?
Second. Darren made the second. All in favor? Any others?
Appreciate it, thank y'all.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
All right, item number two, uh, Jonathan had brought in some information today, they need three items for the police department. They need battery, batteries replaced for the tasers, uh, heavy duty belt clip holster for the phones, and some ammunition. You have a, uh?
I think it totaled around five hundred and forty something dollars.
And they got probably five thousand in place on it?
I'll make a motion. You just take that up and put it on. Eugene made a motion, second.
Yeah.
Tabby? All in favor? All right, discussing police department, um, as y'all know, we've had a job opening posted for about three weeks now, and. And we had two apply that were not certified, were ripe to send to the academy. We don't even know when that might be open again, but we had an officer. Uh, come in working part-time that is APO certified. And he's decided that he would be interested in taking the job full-time. So David stepped out, but anyway, his name is, uh.
Steve Glover.
Steve Glover, he, uh, he worked at Lawrence County for thirteen years. Seems to, I, I've heard only good things about him. So I make a recommendation. He lives around Sheffield.
Cherokee.
Cherokee.
Do they currently work there? When you currently work any more full-time?
Not for, Sheffield, he was late for a job.
We got screwed out that last year.
But the, we lowered the bonus to twenty-five hundred.
On a contract on that, though.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be three hundred.
We got ripped out that last year.
For what good it is, obviously none, we have one on another.
Well, if, if somebody, if, if he's under contract and somebody were to hire him away, I mean, they're, they're gonna write us a check back for that twenty-five hundred.
Why don't you give a sign and vote act to him after six months? Instead of giving it to him right at the beginning, because we should never give them a sign and vote. Of a job slough song, and then they last a month in life.
What's, what's your, your sign and vote?
I know, but you can do it in increments, you don't have to give it to them all at one time.
Give him twelve fifty, hire him twelve fifty, send him to six months.
Look, I'm telling you, I understand what you're saying, but APO certified officers are hard to come by.
I understand, but we didn't beat it twice.
That was a good, it'd be hard if you didn't send his money back too.
Well, and we, we may have to take legal action, but, um.
I've been, in my mind, I mean, understanding what you're saying, when they didn't, well, I can't figure out if he's been APO certified for thirteen years, why he hadn't got a full-time job.
Well, he did for thirteen years.
So he quit then, just went to work in part-time, or did they guard him?
Sheffield and they hadn't, they hadn't hired him, so he knows he's gonna sign a contract.
They quit Lawrence County to go somewhere else?
They, they had a new sheriff hired, I'm not sure of all the details, how it all went down, but.
Have you interviewed this individual?
I've spoken with him.
He's working part-time here now?
It's doing a good job. I don't, I don't think we need to play around too much with this deal.
Well, I'm like this, I mean, we, we make it with them, don't need to make no hasty decisions, I know they're, like you said, they're tough to find, they're, they're out there, but. We've been making it, I've liked had the Assistant Chief or Chief here and out there, input on it, obviously, that's something important.
See if David's out there.
I do know that David and he are friends.
They both work tomorrow at schedule.
Years and they work together, so that's all we have to back it up.
I can't figure out, why you get a full-time job?
I do know we've had some petty crime here lately that we need officers to be on.
Is he gonna drive them back to Ford?
Yeah.
For four, a lot of times?
Yeah. They, they want a little update on, uh, Steve, I told him you worked with him for years at Lawrence County. You, you know him better than I do, but what I know of him, I've been impressed with his, uh, work. I know we had a deputy from Marion County come up today and he talked highly of him, he had had worked some cases with him already. And David can tell you how hard it is to find APO certified guys, they're not out there.
It is very hard, I mean, unless the pay is there, I mean, I said it all in reverse back to the pay. Uh, it's hard to find anybody, especially anybody that's worth more than two cents. Um, Steve's a hard worker, he's a good guy, uh, never heard anything bad about him. Uh, he was my partner for just a little over four years. Uh, I could always depend on him, he was there for backup whenever I needed him. Uh, he's very knowledgeable, got a good head on his shoulders, he's, you know, he's not hot-headed or anything like that. Uh, I think y'all would be well pleased with him.
Do you know why he isn't currently employed full-time right now?
Political, uh, when the new sheriff come in at Lawrence County, he was getting rid of pretty much everybody that worked under the old administration.
Don't hate to make that.
Well, you're at a. You're an at-will employee with the state of Alabama, and any sheriff can come in, when they take you over, they can just wipe slate clean and start brand new, they don't even have to have a reason to get rid of you. Oh, but it's.
Sounds a good one, boy, you know?
Oh. He stopped us.
I mean, honestly, I mean, that's long as you back in here, get your pension, but.
Oh, no, he's, he's.
My man, you know, like y'all said, the city wants, and everybody being shorthanded, and, and I know he's working part-time everywhere he can, but, you know. What you're saying is true, I think the police ain't gonna scoop him up, 'cause everybody's making offers, but.
It hasn't been just, uh, maybe a couple of months, I think, two, three months at the most, I'm not sure exactly when it took place.
She live in Cherokee?
He lives in, uh, but it's Cherokee, I think that's where he lives at.
And he's driving?
It's actually further, it was further for him to drive from Cherokee to Lawrence County Sheriff's Office where he was working at, than it is to drive here. And he, he worked there for thirteen years.
Now, he knows it, he ain't gonna be able to drive our car back before we're done with it.
Yes, yes.
What are we running at now, three, four times?
Could be four times, we, we've got to.
Right.
So it's either that or wait on the academy to come up and try to hire a candidate to send to the academy.
And then they're still looking at twelve more weeks after they actually get into the academy, to get somebody out and. The way times are getting out, it is very dangerous to have an officer out here by themselves answering calls. 'Cause if anything goes sideways, somebody decides they're gonna pull a gun, whatever, things go south. Oh, backup could be thirty minutes to wait, depending on where it's coming from, you know, you could be dead in thirty seconds. And we really need more folks out here on the street. I mean, if we had, you know, two on a shift, you automatically got backup there on every call.
I, I don't know if we can ever get to two on shift, but I was telling them, they've already got a good relationship, he does, with, uh, some of the county deputies and, uh. Which means a lot, not, I mean, they're gonna come and help anytime as backup, but it's good to have that working relationship with the county also.
Yes, and he, he had the same working relationship with all the other agencies within Lawrence County.
So what's the proposed contract for this individual?
Uh, three years and twenty-five hundred dollar sign-on bonus.
Okay. And you're saying he gets.
We'll, we'll put it in there, if he does get hired away, that town would owe us back the twenty-five hundred.
And if he quits, it's just gone.
Same thing, if we send somebody to the academy and spend twenty thousand and they.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing the first to come right there, and we've got big.
You're looking at twenty-five hundred to twenty thousand.
And we agreed that we'd keep.
Plus a veteran officer, a rookie.
Eugene, that's your department, let's hear it.
You heard my comment. If they, I mean, if, uh, Chief, Assistant Chief or Chief, and they get along good, they'll, they think it'll work out. I mean, you know, if he comes in here and, and we find out different, we don't wish for him, so. I mean, if they fight for him, I know they dated, but I mean, that ain't, that ain't us no-brainer. You can't never have enough, if you had forty in Hackleburg, it wouldn't be enough. I mean, I'm for y'all, a hundred and fifty percent.
Appreciate that.
I mean, I am, I'm, I'm all of them. I mean, if you think it's a good R, how much motion are it, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I saw it, but give him a chance. You said he doesn't have, has he been working a bunch, part-time up here already?
Yes, yes. He's been close a few times to working actual full-time hours.
I'm like, mucking R, R tomorrow, if, if that's, you know, if, if they're in agreement with it, he's the assistant, he's gonna be his assistant supervisor, so. I mean, if, if something comes up, you know, you can always bet that.
Yeah, but we, we can get rid of any of them, you know, as quick as we hire them, but, you know, you, we can't judge everybody by how that one. Officer or the one we sent to the academy ended up. Um, bottom line is, we, we gotta have one and I think he would be a good hire.
Motion taken.
Second. You need to make a motion, Kevin, second.
And what, his name is Steve?
Glover.
Glover, okay.
We got two Steves in there.
Well, before, like, what else they gonna mail, you know, yo, rotate or, you can get that work, part-time out there?
Roughly probably, uh, ten to six maybe, or two to ten, it just depends on what shifts need to be covered at the time. Once we finally get enough people actually to cover all the shifts, we can actually go to assign the shift for everybody and everybody will know what to work in.
Yeah. Once we get full-time, we can, we got a couple of part-time.
So right now, we're looking out for the.
We got four, ten, we got four.
Yeah, I know, you don't want them all.
Which one, three and a half years, go in five.
Four minute.
For a break.
For a break.
I think four would be a good number if we can get some good part-time.
Yeah, we, we would like it, we'll do that.
All right, um, another issue that, uh, well, is item number seven, we'll go ahead and talk about it with the police department, but. David came in as Assistant Chief and, um, I think he's done a great job, he's been, brought a lot of stability. I think it's have Jonathan Wyatt, um, and really being the Assistant Chief, I, I, I think it should pay more than fourteen, fifty, with the chief making seventeen. I would like to see, uh, scale him a dollar raise, or at least something to keep David here. I mean, he, he's done a good job, not that he's leaving or anything, or looking to leave, but I'd like to solidify our police department. And not having to keep go, going through what we've been going through.
I think that one of the ways we could stop that is get ahead of the game instead of just playing even with it. If any of these are any good, we oughta send one of them to the academy when he comes back working part-time till a full-time job comes up, have our own part-time person.
Well, the bad thing about it, you got twenty thousand dollars in them.
I know, but we, we can't get ahead without doing it, we're not gonna be able to hire one like this very many times.
But if you send them to the academy, they're gonna wanna work full-time, they're not gonna wanna work.
Well, we could talk to them about that, though.
To send them to the academy, they actually have to be hired full-time with an agency before they can attend the academy.
You don't have to work them full-time after they get out.
They have to be on the city's insurance.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that work.
They have to be on the city's insurance.
Huh?
They have to be on the city's insurance.
You have to hire them before you.
You could put them on insurance through the academy.
Not in part-time.
And a full-time employee can move them back to part-time. There's a way to work this out without setting and arguing about it. I mean, we, 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 we ain't been ahead of the game with the police department since I've been in here.
That's two thousand.
Everything we do, we run behind, ain't like that a dollar.
Yeah, it's only two thousand eighty dollars, because there's, there's two thousand eighty hours in a work year, so that's only two thousand dollars, we should be able to consume that, I vote yes. I make a motion, you and I are going to keep.
I'll second. Everybody a motion?
And you give a vote.
Kevin, second. David on the raise. All in favor? Any opposed?
So it sounds like we got a pretty good team starting.
I think we do right now, I, I really do. You know, Jonathan, he, he's a veteran, but he hadn't been in the chief role as long. And I think having experienced officers is gonna help the whole department, so.
Well, the key thing you said, Kevin, is teamwork, because if they don't get along and you got all that bickering, it ain't gonna work, I mean, that's when they gonna start going their own separate ways. So that's, that's a key factor.
So that and also the money?
Yeah.
I mean.
We, we don't have.
If there's one police, we're right back for his head.
Yeah, we're looking, we're looking at it anyway, aren't we? But, I mean, we, we hadn't, we hadn't lost anything, but we hadn't. He'll be under contract for three years, if somebody hires him away, they pay us back to twenty-five hundred and whichever town's going through this, I mean, they're, they're hiring, trying to hire. Can't find them.
What you wanna do is try to get one in the board, so to speak, if she ready, okay, so if happens, that's kinda what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I understand that, but I, I don't know if you're gonna be able to send one to the academy and then ask them to work full-time or part-time just for the money.
We put two, two in the academy and they were hometown boys and thought we'd keep them here and they didn't.
Well, which more I'm.
I didn't much think we'd keep them.
Anyway, all right. All right, item number four, discussing the street department. We had four apply for the street department job. And kinda what we'd ask of them is to be able to operate equipment, have, uh, some skills as a mechanic, um, be dependable. And in my opinion of who we had picked from, Shane Hudson was the top candidate there. Um, everybody was, they, they had their strengths, what they could've done, but, um.
I disagree with the Harvard anyway, I don't know what's other, but it's only experience they have with Bushog. When we started this, it was gonna be mechanical, turning certified, and I know we didn't get the applicants, but that's one thing that we didn't have to jump into. Was hiring full-time, we could've held out, but.
Eugene, a month ago, you was fighting man, go hire full-time?
Why couldn't we need it?
No, we didn't need it, the winter time, it rained every day, now, now we need it.
We didn't need to clean garbage and stuff out there?
We did clean them out, we, we replaced.
We got, we got the honor of part-time, ride a bush hog, don't we?
What was the qualifications for the applicants that y'all interviewed?
Well, Dawn said he wanted to have backhoe experience, dogger experience, mechanic.
Greater, I'd like that.
Greater.
I'd like to have some.
One and enter, well, the third interview.
I'm sorry, they said for none of them, I'm sorry, who's on, we've got a, he's working for.
And one of them, I don't know who.
Yeah, they got hard, they got, they got.
Well, I've been out of school about fifteen years, I haven't worked a city job, but about four of them anyway.
We're hoping the dudes will eventually find us.
Out of the four applicants, because you did advertise the job, correct? Any of the two were qualified?
Really, no, huh? Did he? Oh, did he?
Who were the two that were qualified that met all the qualifications?
The two that was here when.
No, not made all the qualifications, all they met was Bushogs.
Yeah, but you had, you should've had a matrix and you scored them out, so who scored the highest?
Shane, Shane scored the highest, um.
Okay.
There was another one that has very good potential. And honestly, I'd, I'd like to hire him a couple days a week, working on fixing potholes, till we get that.
Worked in the county part-time, man.
Yeah, he was two days for the county.
For the county part-time, so.
Who's that? Who was? Oh, okay.
Well, he got the experience of equipment, stuff, and other than that, one of y'all, anyway.
It ain't equipped, but he drives a truck around with comets in the back, puts some.
I don't see how the other one has experience, you know.
You said he'd worked for a fire company, didn't you, you know? Here, but like retaining people, you go on about like one, he was talking about hiring for a police department. That position, you need to bring somebody in that y'all, get Washington State to get them certifications, and then they're eager to retire, we don't have to, we don't have a decision to make.
And they hit through.
Okay, your, your fist can get on some bush hog and go like that. So the two top applicants that you're, that y'all said that, who was in this interview process? The two top ones. The two top ones, can they bush hog? Both of them can? Can they operate a backhoe?
Well, the ones we interviewed.
Now, I'm talking about the two that you said was the.
The one that got hired, so he could, he could operate.
There's a difference, saying he could, and he can physically do it.
There is a difference in bush hogging and riding way.
And that is correct.
Bush hogging a field.
Well, the question is, has he done been hired?
Yes.
Well, we discussed it.
I'm updating you.
One, I mean, I thought that need to be voted on.
I don't think that's anymore.
Sounds like ours, that need to be voted on.
We had three people here to do the interview.
He'd worked.
I'm not gonna interview, we'll discuss it with the county.
Whoever we hired.
The only, the only thing I had against him, and I've never done it before, is hire Ken Fos.
Yeah.
But in this case, he's so much, I think he's so much of the ladder that we didn't have no choice, I think he'll be a good young fellow.
He got the experience, I don't care.
He will be good one day.
Yeah, but he just take up.
I don't even want to discuss her, 'cause it don't matter.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something we have no control on, sorry, I don't break it.
You just made a motion to hire an officer.
The item we're laying on the season, and his hiring on the street employee, which all that's supposed to be discussed and voted on, under, what I read, anyway, wrote through the law, but I mean, we might be operating under different law, I don't know.
Yeah, we are.
But, well, covering laws on it, that's what I thought.
All right.
Unpeachable defense.
So we, we're.
So keep it.
Y'all understand, we're right there.
Now, I'm totally lost at this point, so we got two.
He, he, no, you ain't got that, you got that boy, he already.
Okay.
Been hired.
I didn't know that, okay, I'm good, let's go.
Hunter to patch potholes.
We did, hey, y'all.
When did that happen?
No, and they say that one need to discuss, we've got four part-timers, now they full-time.
All right.
You can mine part?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Yeah, sixteen minutes under the rules.
Y'all can fire if you want to.
We may do that.
We may do that. All right, uh. Item number three, the pool, hold on.
Five.
Yes, item number five. Of course, we don't, we don't know if the governor, what she's gonna do tomorrow, if she's gonna make an announcement, um, we don't know if the pool will even be open to the public or not. But the question that we need to talk about, the pool probably still needs to be cleaned up, the pumps need to be ran and cycled and they don't need to sit there for two years, because we'll be replacing pumps and buses and all that.
Everything was drained out, it should have been, and they were supposed to put free, uh, antifreeze in it last year. So as long as you're not doing anything with that application of putting water back into that system, then you will be all right. Now, um, I'd hate to go spend a lot of money, 'cause it costs us two thousand dollars cleaning everything, 'cause it's gotta be painted. You know, last year we got away with not painting it, and we said this year we would have to paint it because of that.
If we're just getting it up to run, to run everything through it and run the pumps, we won't have to paint it right now.
No, you could fill it with water and get it going.
Right, run.
As long as you're not cleaning it and all that stuff.
But it's not be a good year to fix that.
Well, you could shut the whole thing, and, and where it's cracked at the back, in the deep end, that pipe that comes in here, and you said you're not gonna run it this year, and repair those.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know that we're not gonna run it, I mean, if, if the governor opens it up tomorrow.
Why don't, why don't we discuss it at the next meeting, after we have some definite direction?
Well, we, we can, but I'm just thinking if we don't open it.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Well, even.
In my opinion, I, my.
We can make that decision tonight.
Even, I mean.
I don't think it needs to be open, because.
Even if we do, even if the governor gets off the, there's still gonna be social, social distance rules in place.
Yeah.
And right now, it's ten people, who knows, it could go fifty, but we've had up to eight people in, during, during July, we have about a hundred fifty in there. So we, I don't know how we're gonna e, even handle that.
The way it is, I think we'd be, money had to go ahead and say, let's just get the pool in good shape, paint and fix that leak and everything this year, and open it up next year, if the health situation.
It has to be made, it's kept up, 'cause it's underground, honey.
There's no way we can open it with, with the pandemic like it is.
I'd have thought it, we could, I think we need to go ahead and get it right, we have to do some digging out or something.
Yeah, I do too, Kevin.
Just do it.
We can get that leak fixed, and get it cleaned out, and get it painted, and really have it in good shape.
Where the diamond boards at? Where the diamond board used to be?
We got these parts, we got doors in there, and paint and everything.
So we gotta save some glory now, so probably, I don't know what I'd do, but my heart's might not say, anyone say. So I don't tell it. Action's going up.
We don't, the most we ever had was here.
Okay, boy.
On average, there was a few days we had fifty, sixty people, but most of the time it's twenty-five, thirty, and it does give them something to do.
That, that's the one we thought about, if we did get to open it, a lot of people, that's all they have, is to get to go to the pool, they don't have one at home, they don't.
But they won't dish it.
Probably not, but.
You can take one up where it gets some COVID, and gives it to a hundred, and one of them dies, there you go.
But we, I mean, but we do agree we need to work on it and run the pumps and.
Yes, sure.
Okay, all right. Um, I don't think we need to vote on that, we can agree on that. All right, item number six, discuss the park, uh, we've got all, most of the park equipment moved from the Hackleburg Park, and what we talked about was moving it down Wigginton, and we've got, got it all set up, um, looks really good, that, that should help the people down in that community. So now, the new equipment is coming in, it, it don't all come in on one truck, but it's, it's coming in, and we're working on getting everything leveled up and ready to put the new equipment in, and once it all gets here, then they'll start building it. You know, it, it's way good, they've worked hard on getting it took up and moved and set back up, so as soon as we know we've got all the equipment in, we'll start putting up the new park.
Is our employees putting that together, or?
Yeah. And Don, you, you got with them and showed them that the park went all?
No, they was in hurry to get that stuff out of there and go to Wigginton, so, but I got another caller saying they want them lights put up, so we really need to get them to put them up, we got some people want to walk at night.
At Wigginton?
No, up here, you go, when you go to the monument and go that, the first three lights works, and the rest doesn't all out.
Yeah, it's a bit time that, frankly, LED is cheaper.
Chad's gonna be getting with you now.
Okay.
Don, you can look for the LED lights, you can get the picture now for nearly nothing, they dropped the price now, so, 'cause those are the metal headlights.
These are regular, regular street lights.
Yeah, but he changed them out to the.
To the LED.
LED.
That's good, that gives you some light.
Right. We've got the same rules on the park too, because all parks are supposed to be closed.
Playgrounds are, parks are open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you can walk, you go a substantial distance.
There's a.
And they're hoping that they'll open it back up.
I think use them.
The kids might get to play some baseball and softball, 'cause they.
I walk two, two.
Yeah, but baseball's past the building, they're.
Stuff might have walked fifty-two point eight miles. Yeah.
So that, that's it up there at the park where we're at, um, hopefully by the time they get it put up, the van will be off and they can come in and enjoy it. As much as us adults are tired of being at home, kids are really tired of being at home, so. I mean, Tony's ready to get out and play someone else.
Oh, yeah. I bet three mothers like to get out, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
I'm ready for it, sir.
All right, on, uh, Grading Gravel, we've got John Pate, Rodney Williams, and Patricia Crowell, so made a motion to move the Grading Gravel. Motion. Second. Don, second.
Yeah.
All in favor? All right, need a motion to adjourn. Maybe. Yes, everybody's in favor.